Will you try again? Try and refresh your screen if you don't mind me trying again.
So, since we are all back, I just wanted to make a recommendation to the group. If we can decide to table the BDDH, I think it's KL discussion because specifically the KL, because the board is going to need to make some decisions on how we're going to meet some criteria. And so you guys will have to give us some guidance on that. And it's going to take discussion. But as I was saying earlier, Lori and I are absolutely going to have to have some guidance from the board on budget. So we have to talk about budget. That has to be a priority today, if that is okay. And so it would be my recommendation. We work with Ashley and the board to set up an additional training at late in afternoon or even in evening sometime for last part of April, first part of June, I'm sorry, May, June, for us to be discuss those. Sarah talked about doing norms and whatever other work you guys need to do.
Not a training, but a work session.
A work session, correct.
Yes.
Because we need, we do need guidance on BDDH, so it needs to be approved by July 1. And you guys need to make some decisions on the KL, the community engagement, and then if you want to work on the norms for sure.
So like first two weeks of June sometime, just anybody that sounds like we can kind of fund it. Yeah.
If you want to sneak into that, you'd go right ahead.
So look, if you want to work on the date now, or do you want to have Ashley send some stuff out?
Ashley can send it. I've got that every day. The first week of June.
It impacts your heartbeat, that's right. As you see my number here.
I don't have it. Not at all, the first week of June.
I knew it. You've got to work at it.
Anybody, is everybody Tuesday 30th or doesn't that have a possibility? We had a suggestion on that.
Do you think that would work for me?
May 30th?
Yes.
I got, I got nothing on that date.
What was that, May 30th?
May 30th.
May 30th. Did you say May 30th?
Yes.
We can set it up. It's, I'm assuming evening?
I've got an all-day thing with my leadership team. Night, I'm free.
What time would be start time?
Or I can change my stuff.
Four?
Four.
Four? Four. Perfect. $1,600. Fantastic. Thank you guys so much. I appreciate that very much. We are going to, the board is going to work on norms. We're going to work on, oh, it's KC, not KL. BDH, BDDH, public participation in board meetings and community engagement, KC, needs to be discussed. And we're also going to touch on scorecard dashboards.
And that's May 30th, 4:00 here.
Yes. Fantastic.
Yeah, remember, Patty Go, what's that?
Where did Tammy go? Did you delete yourself?
Can I move myself back in?
I'm glad that you could move up next to somebody.
Budget next?
Yes, please.
I found you, Patty.
So we have attached the presentation. I'm hoping that you guys can see that. We're going to be reviewing some numbers. We can pull that up, yes? As we can. So as we get to talk about that, one of the things I'd like to do is, as you guys know, we have transitioned from Tammy Short had a particular way in which she budgeted. And that was learned from Dr. Jordan Pace. Kevin Patterson continued that. I continued. And then when Dr. Wilson came on, she was using a little bit different process in West Plains, as well as, I don't know if you've used them in Aurora or not.
No, Billy did that.
Didn't ask that question. And I really, I prefer this much better. I think the information that we are receiving, once again, please don't ever take this as if I am somehow saying the way that Tammy Short was budgeting was wrong and this is correct. That is not that comparison at all. It is just simply a different philosophy in terms of budgeting. I think as our budget has become more and more, well, just tighter, I don't know any other way to say it. Having this more narrow view, I think is helpful to us. It's kind of a macro to micro look is the way Tammy budgeted, which is more so the way Lori is budgeting, is that micro to macro look. And so I think that this has been very helpful to us. I think that you guys work, I'm assuming that Lori will continue this next year. So the way that she is budgeting, looking at our big categories like salaries, benefits, expenditures, and other ways, we're going to be able to track this more accurately, accurate is not the word I want to use, more pointed by month than what we have correctly done in the past. And so I think we're going to review these dashboards with you so you can see how it is we're going to be analyzing those pieces. And then we're going to come back and look at the budget as a whole, and we're going to look at FY '24 as a whole, because I'm going to need a little bit of guidance from this board on, we're going to kind of state what we think we can do in terms of step raises for our staff. But I want you to understand where it is that we are and what we're recommending. I wanted to do that to get a sense of where this board is before we bring it to our collective bargaining group, because we have never had a conversation together to discuss where we are. Because you guys may not decide to go in a direction that I was thinking originally at all. And so you may provide some other recommendations to us. Now, we're not voting on anything. This is informational. We're sharing. I'm getting feedback from you so that I can go forward and have conversations with my leadership team as well as the MSDA bargaining group. And then we'll bring recommendations back to the board based on that information issue. So that's why we needed some guidance from you today. Okay? So that being said, we will jump in to the presentation. We'll go to the first slide. This is going to begin our conversation about salaries. And I'm going to kick it over to Dr. Wilson and have her kind of talk through these. Once again, I want to talk about, as we go through the years, the benefit and the power in this spreadsheet is going to be saying, here's where we were this year, and then the next year will say, here's what the first prior looked like, here's what the current year looks like. Because this is new, the first and second year, prior year's data is not as beneficial to us in its current state because we didn't budget the same way, because we changed direction. Those aren't the accurate numbers. That is what we did. But it wasn't real time. The point of the spreadsheet is the real-time data. Since we're not, this year we'll have the current year to look at, then it becomes the first prior year next year. So now we can compare as we've grown, because that's how we built it. That's how we looked at it. So it's going to be more valuable to us as we go. So that being said, we're going to let you go ahead and dive in and start talking about just kind of this spreadsheet and where we are, and then we'll go to the next step.
Okay. So with the budget, I think as you know, with all, with how large it is, and not coming in as saying that I had put it together or worked with it, I know that Tammy had amounts in there built in for if we had to overspend in one area, she could pull it from others. And so that's been very challenging for me this year to find that money. You'll see here, it's there. It's just been challenging for me to know where it was at. And like I said, you'll see that it is there. Now with these, where do these spreadsheets come from? Is, I'll tell you, Jason Hoffman, and some of you know him because he's with Mo Cat, he did a presentation last June, about when we moved our money to Mo Cat. He is a CPA, and he was Jefferson City's financier. Okay? So everybody sort of follows his lead. He speaks with NASA and all these organizations, and he is for the guru of finance. And so what he has with these is he tracks the big ticket items. And you know, you know that our salaries and our benefits makes up 75, 76% of our budget. You know, so that's what you're, once you've set that for the coming year, you can start working with your other items. And so the spreadsheet you see here, salaries. Now next year, what I will do, this is salaries for certified and non-certified. Next year, I will track it in both categories because I start liking the detail a little bit more. And what this does is it basically looks at your prior years, and then it gives you an average down at the bottom. It'll say projection. So each time you put in the current years or the current month's numbers, it looks at what you've done in the prior two years, what the averages are, and then it projects where you're going to be at the end of the year according to the budget. Okay? So with that, I've, oh, teacher and me coming up. No, I'm fine.
Sarah.
No, that's okay. The teacher and me coming down. So here is the budget. Here is the projection. Now the budget, this changes based on how we have budgeted this year and in the past. You adopt a budget, you have an adopted budget. Let's say you have adopted budget of $10,000. And you know that you have all of that to move money when flip all of these accounts. So we have been moving money for the working budget. So anytime, because Tammy did a wonderful job, if you wanted to move money, you had to say, I'm coming from here and I'm putting it here. So our working budget sort of always changes a little bit, especially when you see, and I know it's hard to explain, but especially when you see this number, these two numbers. So if you were to go back and look at what our budget was at the beginning of the year, that is not necessarily the number, because we have pulled from it to cover something else. So this will change. So what it does is it takes your total each month, and then it looks at, with a formula, compares the last two years, and it says, how much are we projected to really spend? So we're really projecting to spend as of the end of April, $44 billion in this salary. We budgeted 45. Hopefully, we're going to come in a bang to a good. That's hopefully. Because if you look here, and for those of you that are not aware of school finance, all these numbers look pretty, look the same across until you get to May into June, and especially in June. And what happens in June is that we pay out June, we have all kinds of payroll groups. So a teacher is paid, is on a contract, but they're paid through, what, June, July, and August. So because we're cash basis, you need to make sure that it comes out of our accounts and is charged to this year. So this would include June, July, and August payroll. It would also include federal programs. If we have federal programs such as special education, some of those types of things, we are required by law to pay them by June 30th. That is why that number is so much higher across the board. Now, this is an estimate, because we haven't made through May, and we haven't made through June. So I estimated, and you can see, because we raised salaries, it was 3.6 last year, I'm going to go ahead and say 4 million this year, and then it was 8 million last year, I'm going to say 8.8. So this is still in flux. But you can see that we budgeted this much. We think we're going to spend this much. And I start looking at that all the way back in November and in October to make sure we're on budget. Does that make sense? Yes. I see your question. Amber?
Oh, I'm just trying. So July and August, you're paying in June, but I guess what's left there is people who are not on contract, so that's payroll you're paying out.
Say that again for me.
So you said in June, you're paying out for June, July, and August.
Yes, our teachers, certified staff.
So the rest, so what I see there for July and August would be like everybody else?
July and August for next year, for this year?
Because there's still a million in September.
That's saying, that's, we're a million in, 1.1 million?
And they'll just close out at the top. It's the hourly.
It's on hourly, I'm sorry. Yeah.
And summer school.
So you're telling me that includes us, we're 12-month employees?
And somebody else.
Yes. And what I'll do next year is I'm going to break this apart. Yeah. Usually they don't break it apart, but I like to see just like that, because you're looking at, oh my gosh, 8 million, how come it's only 1 million in July and August, but September now it almost 4 million?
Because then you probably pay that together.
Right. But if we can see the consistency between, on your non-certified and certified, that will make more sense.
Even though the teacher's on a nine-month contract?
We pay them 12 months.
They split that salary over you. They work that way.
Yeah. So just to give you an example, kind of the comparison, I don't know if you guys are following the conversation that's going on at Springfield Public School, annualized pay.
Yeah.
I'm not necessarily going to get into that, but with teachers, because they have a contract, so they sign a contract that has a set dollar amount. We take that set dollar amount, we divide it by 12, and this is what their payments are, and then we do any deductions, things like that. And that's how then that paycheck goes out. Well, if you're annualized pay in an hourly person, that's where things got really complicated, or they get really complicated, because technically you're really not paying them correctly. And so we actually went away from annualized pay a while ago and had gone through this, which is, it is the, I'm trying to not question anybody there, do you understand, that is the way that you, because what happens is in annualized pay, if I work 40 hours, I can only pay you for 32 hours, because eight hours have to be banked, because I'm going to write you a check in July when you're not here.
Lots of schools do that. Even at West Plains, we did that, lots of schools.
If not these schools.
It's incredibly shocking.
You have to recognize what they work.
Right. And right now, there could be in a way, it's not school, school people speaking at each board being very upset that it's going away all of a sudden.
Yeah.
So I will say that I feel like Tammy Short did an amazing job. We spent a process of over, almost two years, working with our staff and transitioning the groups. She worked with them on budgeting. She, we did many things, because I was in operations at the time, doing HR, and so her and I worked together as we transitioned that. So I think some of it was a little bit of shock. But to this point, that's where those different pay groups, so when you talk about Stephanie managing all that payroll, she has to manage all of those different groups. If they're exempt, non-exempt, hourly versus contract, many, many, many processes that have to happen in order to get the pay correct.
Here's where I can ask about, what is the theme of the budget process again? Are we paying?
It's not later.
No, no. You can ask now. So we, so we, in talking to our support staff, there has always been a problem with paying once a month, because they have to go an entire month. Now, for me, I've always been, my entire working life has been once a month, in the military and in education. However, if you're a para, or if you are a custodian, or you could go as long as six weeks of work in the beginning and not get a paycheck.
August is July, not July, but in September.
Exactly. And because, so from a recruiting standpoint, that was like, that was one of the things is we started questioning people, what would be good, they said, if we could be paid twice a month and bringing that on board. And that was why we started to do that and transition that as well.
So their first one would be earlier.
Correct. So we pay that, our pays are going to be the first and 15th.
Yeah, and then it's for the salary.
Yes, so everybody transitions.
So everybody transitions and then not just the group, we're talking about.
Correct. So right now, we just did the hourly, but next year, we were taking everybody. So we'll be two payrolls.
So that will also help with new teachers, because if you're a brand-new teacher, you don't have to pay until the end of September. So now, if your salary teacher will get paid.
Yeah. So they'll get a, it'll be a little smaller, but they'll.
Yeah, it'll be smaller, right. And also with Stephanie, I'm just telling you guys, you have classified, the adult rules, then you have certified, and with certified, you have the 10-month pay, group your nine-month pay, group your 11-month pay, group your 12-month pay, group your federal programs. We need to start condensing it as much as we could.
Do you have a question?
It doesn't matter. Stephanie.
She's on payroll.
Payroll, no, it's okay.
She's payroll.
You'll get there. Okay, so this will be something that we'll update every month, and it'll be in the board reports. If, if all came true, nothing major, we're thinking we still will have a million dollars on it over again, salaries. Okay? That you can, that if you had to go buy something, if something came up, we had this wonderful piece of property that we need to spend a million dollars on, we have it right there, unless you wanted to put it back into the fund balance. You just have to.
So I can't put examples back for it.
Well.
Do what?
Yes, but like she says, get after it, let it forward.
I can't do that. I can only say.
Yeah, you can make a difference.
And there's reasons, I mean, there's, there's other, and I have overgeneralized, but yes.
You have to.
Yes.
But you're saying when you give us an annual monthly board report?
This will be.
The ones in the yellow or whatever the ones we, that's left?
Is.
Will be what actually happened, yes.
Correct.
And then like in the brown gold color, that's what we're projecting, the salaries and.
Down here, you will see like in July, or in August for July, it'll only have a July number, all of these will be blank. You'll see the budget, you'll see the projection, which obviously is going to be pretty raw, because it's in July, and then you'll see this. Okay?
So that's, this is what I was talking about, this will be one of the business office dashboards that you'll then be able to look at and track and see where we are, so you can see all of our salaries tracking. Now, I will, I will state, for me, before, prior to this, when Tammy and I would work, we would pull up these spreadsheets, and we were looking at a lot of things in general, so I had to make some assumptions. 40% of what I'm projecting here on certified staff, that's classified staff. So I'd have to run some numbers myself, trying to figure some of these things out because of the way we were budgeting, right? Because you would roll this year's budget to next year and then adjust throughout the year. Now we're going to be a little bit more precise in what we're rolling, and then we're tracking it monthly and looking at how that's tracking month by month. So that's going to give us a little bit more information as we go and as we see. So I, to me, I'm excited about that, because that is going to help us to either understand, hey, we got to keep staying on, you know, stretching the spending, we got to keep the pressure on, or, hey, we're doing okay, things are looking a little bit better maybe than what we thought, let's kind of keep track, and we can see it month by month, as opposed to, if you come to June, we could have maybe spent some money, but we didn't, and so, you know, because you didn't know exactly where you were at or where you had some flexibility. So I appreciate this, and I think obviously next year for you guys, that's how you'll be able to utilize this and have, I think, some better conversations than some of what we had shared before. I think this is more detailed.
So you won't see, and it will be a, it'll be, you know, that culture and that climate thing, it will be a shift, because we're going to try to get more towards what you're saying, that in total, operations may have 1.5 million, and he's been able to move it in between all of his accounts. That's because of how we've been budgeting, pretty much a rollover kind of thing from a prior, prior budget. What we're going to do is try to roll over as accurate as we can of what you've actually spent and try to leave it in those accounts until maybe have in December, one big change, then if you need to, and then we come back in June and we have another change. Because right now, we're not tracking variances very well. We're not tracking that constantly this account is 25% over every year. Well, if it's 25% over every year, we need to look at it, and we also need to figure out how we're going to pay for it. And then it comes back to you, that you're not going to, you know, in the past, you've had the soft budget in June, but then you're going to, and then you had in September, the hard budget, where she did the budget book. The budget book's going to be in June, so that you know. Yeah, we'll present that next month, and so that you will know that we're as close to what we, we know, as close to where we are going in. I'm hoping that you won't see, and it'll be an adjustment on the board. You know, in June, you would probably see that our fund balance, like what he was saying, your fund balance is going to be 21% for the year. But then you come back in the July, the nick of the following, of that year, and now you're at 30% fund balance. I'm hoping that we can level that off, and then when you make decisions, you actually know how much is affecting your fund balance, instead of this big swing. That's, that's where, but it's still going to be two years down the road till we all feel comfortable and we get it home being to where we want it to be.
So as we would roll those budgets, you know, say if you were looking at the custodial line, where you're saying buying custodial products, one year to the next, you say you have $25,000 in there, the next year you have $25,000 in there, the next year you have $25,000 in there. But when you go back and look at the actual spin, as an example, you're actually at $75,000. Well, that means throughout the whole year, you're transferring money into that account from the other ones. What Lori's saying is, okay, if 75, where did that need to be set? Instead of the 75, so we can start tracking, rather than having to be down in these other two lines at $10,000 each, and then moving it seven times. We're having better conversations around where that is. And that was an extreme example, that did not happen. I'm just saying that, that's where we're talking about going with that. And, but when you roll that budget from previous to next, that's really what you're just rolling, is what was that set number. And so we want to zero in on that better.
It was going towards something like this. We already met with all of his group, we've met with their group, to have the principals have a little more buy-in to their budget, to tell us what, what they need, what they don't need, so we can come back and make decisions. And also, it sort of warmed my heart a little bit, because he met with Tammy last week, they wouldn't have lunch, and Tammy said, oh yeah, in Springfield, they're going more towards this method of budgeting. So I'm like, oh, thank goodness I'm not leading anyone down the wrong path. All right, so this is benefits, and once again, next year I'll break down classified and certified. But benefits, and you can see right now that we budgeted this amount, and then we projected this, and so we should have a surplus of 373. I always want to say 10 times over, remember, this is an estimate. Here's purchase services. So our next tick, big tick, two big ticket items, 6,300 accounts, which are purchase services, which are a lot of things, and then also supplies. Supplies will be 6,400, so that'll be next. Same concept, and if you ever want to know, you know, good, this number, these, is an average of these two. This one, it's, it was 3.3, now it's 3.9, 7.2, which has been additional, so you can see how much you spent all year long. I don't do that. So you can see that's purchase services.
It's your spend, is that your spend rate?
Of how much you spent so far.
Yeah.
Spend rate. For the terms and the rate.
And then supplies.
Now, can we back up real quick?
Yes.
Purchase service, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Just to give you an example of a purchase service, that's when we talk about like we had to buy a power stool, so we're purchasing that service from them. It could be any other services, like architect fees, things like that. Simbly, that's purchase service.
Someone to come out and.
MSBA, the purchase service, yes. Hiring, temperature control will come out and work on one of our pieces of equipment, could be a perfect, it works on a service stream. Like for example, Kirsch Group, you guys did the contract agreement with the kitchen PMCS stuff, doing the preventive checks and maintenance on kitchen items, that was a purchase service. And so we were able to do that as a purchase service, even cheaper than what our guys were doing that work for. So those, those are the things that are purchase services.
And so why is April, May, and Orange again? I know I.
Because they're estimates.
I understood, but like April's not.
Yeah, but not at the time, with, with how we haven't closed out the month, so I don't have, at the time I did this, last week, I did not have the final numbers.
Sure, we're able to leave that one, it's the rest.
Oh, well, that, those are, they just come through that.
Salaries are a little more.
Were you waiting on invoices from these companies or something?
No, it's just a timing.
Okay.
Closing out the month, yeah, those kinds of things.
So obviously, like November, December, is that pretty typical, that there's a big purchase, is that specific?
You can see it was in November the prior year, and then December.
Yeah.
So I would say about that time, we may have done music payment around there. There's some big balloon payments.
Actually, actually, one year I messed up, and Tammy and I had to come in over Christmas.
And you have, you pay your, like we have some, during virtual learning, you get some bill come due at the end of semester, and so on.
So let me also say, here, this is 2.3, there, here, this was 2.9, that's also piercing. So there's some anomalies of one-time things that were in there.
Okay.
That won't happen again.
Yeah, so that may have been an anomaly, is that?
Yeah. But if you look here, here, two years ago, it was high, and then. But if you look here, here, two years ago it was high, and then here, but there are some pieces, virtual learning pieces, we have a music bill, it's a property insurance.
School over music.
I'm sorry.
It's our insurance.
Child insurance.
It's all our.
School insurance.
School insurance.
It's the bank.
Yeah.
It's the bank. All of those kids we recognize.
Yeah, we have arts.
But it's liability workers' comp.
Yeah, liability workers' comp, property insurance.
And I suspect what happened is last year we paid that bill in November.
Yeah, well, yeah, this year was December.
I think December, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
So you can see.
Some of it's when they bill us.
Right, absolutely, yeah.
You can see we still are projecting $300,000, but please notice, once again, it's an estimate. There could be something that comes up and he has a great deal on something that he needs to get and we throw it in here.
Okay, so it looks like in June it's typically higher, last couple of years was kind of.
Yeah, I know this is part of Pearson. This one, that one maybe too, that was Pearson too.
Is Pearson for your online, was, is that all subjects or?
No.
Online learning. It was for the kids, kids learning.
No, we, we don't do that.
Partnership, that was right.
Yes.
So we actually were the fiscal agent for Pearson, so all of the Mo cap for the state came through us. So it, when, when a student in Jeff City joined Pearson, those dollars were paid to us and then we paid Pearson.
But we're no longer.
That, that agreement has concluded, we're no longer.
That kind of went out with the pandemic.
During COVID, we needed a, we needed a vendor during COVID that could handle our online learning and that's when we developed a partnership with Pearson. Once COVID was passed and we didn't need them, and we dropped the vendor and they went into a different district because it was more trouble than it was worth. And we didn't have that and the kids taking advantage of it after the pandemic.
Yeah. And if, if, if we had been in the agreement that one side couldn't hurt the other, when both cap changed laws and they just started accepting whoever, we had a little bit of control before, we lost that control, we said this is going to be damaging to us because that student in Jeff City, their math scores would come to us as the fiscal agent, they would report hours. We did not want that. So we said that is going to hurt us, so we were able to end the contract and then they agreed and it was amicable, all was good. And so anyway, but that's why those dollars are there, it was money in, money out.
Yeah, you would find that on the revenue side, awesome.
I am going to have to leave in three minutes and I will get back as soon as I can, I promise, because we need to obviously continue.
Put your voice to hold the discussion here.
Well, I thought what we would do is if we could continue to talk about these spreadsheets and then when we, when we get to, we can take a short break, but if, if you guys would, if you would, then when we get down here, talk about all the different funds and then we'll talk about when I get back.
Absolutely.
Then we'll sit, that way we can talk about a little bit more in detail there, if that's okay. Sarah's good.
That sounds great. Have a good, have a simple inventory, tell everybody who's in.
I will.
You want to come with you?
Yes.
Road trip, another road trip.
Another road trip.
So this is the final one right now, supplies. And if you look at it, the same concept, wasn't necessarily through April at the time, and it is definitely a timing thing, because right now we're still in April. Didn't have, when I did this, didn't have, because we did this at the beginning of last week, didn't have all the final numbers, but I definitely, I don't have May, even though we're in May, because we haven't closed the month. So it looks like we're, we're not, we're 183 in the hole in supplies, which, no, once again.
Costs supplies.
Costs supplies, and we'll talk about that.
Yes.
But we've got purchase services that cover it. We have, the, the theory has always been that you can move this pot of money to cover this pot of money, okay? And, and we're going to work on that. Then, so, and I'm blunt, you guys can chime in on this. So what we're talking about, when he comes back and we talk about the fund balance, I want, I want us to, I have an understanding of where we're at this year, and probably it is you just like it's in us inflation. So this is an example of electricity, water, and natural gas. And so if you look year to date, in '21, we were here, year to date, '22, here, year to date, '23, here. Now, we did add the OIC, okay? And we also did some things with Tiger Paul, Paul, but when talking with Chris, some of that was already online, so it wasn't a huge increase.
It actually did.
Go ahead.
So it's actually better because we replaced fluorescent lights and we replaced a HVAC system that was more compartmentalized with a centralized system and LED. So if you were to go back two years, when district office was over there, that we would, we should have been higher because we were utilizing space heaters and HVAC units per room and fluorescent lights, but just due to inflation, it's gone quite a bit.
And this is just an example, this is not a pick on Curtis area at all, this is just an example. Water has gone up, and look at natural gas. And I'm assuming you're seeing this in your own homes and you're seeing some of this in your, in your own buildings. I'm telling you, that's not attributable, that's not attributable to this building. It is not, okay? So with just those three, now we talk paper products. Now we talk.
We're picking on me?
We're not, I'm trying to find yours. What, what, I mean, there are just lots of things, God said, has got out there. And so. Do what?
Luckily it's transit work.
It's a long.
That's what they originally said.
Yes.
But like tires, bus tires.
Okay, so for example, bus tires.
They went up 11%, like last January, they went up 11% and then before June, they went up, June of last year, they went up another 17%.
Year?
No. So and then they've gone up, we, we actually purchased last year right before they went up because we knew they were going up for this year, and now this year we're coming, we're going to come back here just a little bit by for next year, but it's, they're, they're.
If you could just bought vehicle tires, you know, the dawn of the day is that you can.
There's nothing that makes me mad at the people that's there, that sets me off like you, I don't know why, but the boy does, does. My husband doesn't even want to talk to me about it, he goes, Lori, we got to do it. No, we don't, let's keep wearing that tread a little more.
I'll spend money on shoes and tires, so if you'd like to go buy shoes.
No, I don't, look what I'm wearing, no, I don't. There was another example, okay, so when we met with all the principals, what their number one is definitely supplies has gone up, nursing supplies. Now that's just like new in this budget that our nurses are saying, we can't even cover the cost of all the cough drops kids want. Okay, so I say that, this is, this is a, an example, but it's across the board. And when we're talking about, and I know I think, I don't know, I think Chris is going to bring it up, if you have been paying attention to the legislative issues that have the potential to pass, especially with property taxes, folks are going to get hit. It is something that we need to think about in the next couple of years.
We're going to get that, thanks.
Exactly. So I'm, I'll talk a little bit about this and then we'll go on a whole because I want to make sure, because this is Chris's bit. I want to make sure that for the newbies, that you have just a, I have the real quick training on the different accounts. So with fund accounting, you have general, special revenue, debt service, and project, capital projects. This is going to look a little odd right here because special revenue are teachers, right? Our teacher salaries. I don't have anything in there right now because part of this is still a projection and I have it all right here. So when you see next year's here in a little bit, you're going to see there's going to be in this line and in this line. Because what happens is, was you have general revenue, which has your classified people, your non-certified, all your supplies, okay? Then you have your special revenue or special and expenditures, teacher salaries. You have to clear that out, it has to be zero at the end of the year. So when that happens, you make a transfer. Let me show you really quick down here. For the expenditures for next year, notice, I've got this, these are broke out, and then there's a, a transfer for zero out. I'm just running it through one account on the other one right now, okay? It's the same concept, same numbers, not as below, but it's all right here. I'm going to zero this out anyway. So you have your general revenue, you have your special revenue, teachers only, then you have debt service, bonds, right here, debt service, and then you have your capital projects. If we have a lease purchase, it'll go through your capital projects. If you have a roof, if we bought that land, capital projects. Okay? So we start with the beginning balance in each of these funds off of the ASVR, and I know you don't want to hear the acronym. Basically, that is our financial statement that has been uploaded to Desi. It's our audit statements.
Online at Desi's number.
Right.
They've used our ASVR, that's what they've used and they're reporting out.
Yeah, so we go and make sure that when the audit is done, everything matches, so that's a good starting number, is what I'm saying. And so it's according, we can match that back. So you have your beginning balance of money that's in each of these funds, how much revenue goes into each of the funds, how much we are expending, what our balance could potentially be, any transfer that we make to capital projects, and then what our ending balance is in each one. And this will also be a report that you'll see every month.
This is projection for next school year.
This school year. This one is this school year. There's two of them, this one says FY '23.
Okay, at the top. So this one's.
Yeah. So this is where I want to stop or answer any questions because Chris wants to have a conversation.
So when she talks about debt service, she talks about that, that pays off, or that's for bonds, that's the, we made approximately that much in the bond payment per year.
Yeah.
And that's a separate line item on taxes.
And when we talk about levies and setting the levy, then we set where the money, our incoming taxes, where they go in each of those accounts.
Yes, we do. So we'll say if we're going to get $25,000 in local revenue, then we're going to say 75% goes in the general fund and 25% goes in the teaching fund. We look at where the numbers that we have and then we move our percentages on our revenue to cover. And we are also have to, you know, a certain percentage, when, when we get paid from Desi for our money, that going to withhold some of this money from, and we have to make allocations and we need to make sure we've got the right percentages in there.
So like we were talking about, kids were going to get harder, things getting much more expensive. I've been in like last year, maybe October, I don't remember or something, a long time ago, I went in and talked with some of the, like trying to people to help understand this. So we're here for you guys first, because I'm the person who was on the, right?
So, and I'll be honest with you, that's one of the reasons I wanted us to do the, this exercise for the strength, so I could see how we all need to relate and how when you ask me questions, I'm not taking offense.
Yeah, I really am, just trying to, right, I'm really, it's not a big person. Good. And I'm not very good at communicating that, I wish I.
But now we know.
Yes.
Now we know.
Good. So in light of all of that, in light of other, like the Hancock Amendment, you know, how it says if you have a certain number reserved and you're supposed to go lower the money. So will you explain that to me from your perspective, because I hear different perspectives and like, I'm not a teacher, but I'm not a finance person, so I'd just like to hear how, what's all the thinking and the context and.
Can I, you guys are welcome to chime in here, but I probably need to have that conversation with you after next week because I'm meeting with our on person and see if we're going to have to roll that.
Okay.
And I have to, conversation.
Okay.
You can go ahead and chime in if you want. It's hard to explain, it really is. And your auditor, the, the local assessor will say, your schools really are hurting with that, and they should, and then they don't get caught in the middle, but then we have to roll it back by statute on some of it, but then you can also move between funds to.
We rolled it back last year and we're more, a lot of schools didn't have to roll it back.
Sorry, there's, there's some districts, so philosophically looking at it, there are some districts that are not growing, that their assessed value goes up and their operating costs and their salaries are dead even. So in those situations, you're, you're not going to get a windfall, but in the school district like Ozark.
We can get a windfall.
Like, we're going to get, like my, my personal property went up 25% this, or my, my, my house went up 25% of my property debt, others went up 12%. So there's probably, it should come back next month. But the problem is, is that's realized two years in reserve, in the rears for us, like we have, we have to hire the teachers this year, then we're not going to get property tax on for 18 to 24 months. We have to open new buildings, we have to do all this stuff ahead of time before we're getting this property tax, and they're going to roll it back now, which means we're, we're going to collect, we're, we are going to collect more, but it's not keeping pace with the way we're growing.
With the growth of the school.
Yeah.
Right. And so with, with some of the things that are happening, I did reach out to Joe Kinder, I went to Joe and said, are we going to have to roll back? And he said, that's just a possibility for next year.
Tell them who Joe Kinder is.
Oh, Joe Kinder is our bond person at Sea Hall and List, and he's coming down, okay? So we can start that process so that when we have our budget made into, we can be that permission.
Yeah, very hard to explain. I'd actually have to pull up the statute, the rate of change or whatever. I'm the person who always goes for the school things and like pay for the kids on their education. But honestly, like we're talking about, if everybody's in a hit a lot harder, that might do a lot to help them. I mean, if we had to roll back, maybe there's still a writing in the guide or something.
We're going to be required to roll that back.
I think, yeah, I just don't have much. So I think a lot. I think they'll see that as a, as though like, oh, let's support our schools, they're helping us, so.
Right, and I get that, but at the same time, that's less money in our coffers, like for our kids and our teachers.
So we have, we need to, yeah. We'll be complaining when our class sizes grow.
Yeah, and that, that is something, I think that Chris will mention too, because we've talked about that, that if property taxes go, go down, if they don't go down, if our state revenue's really flat, you as a board are going to have to make some decisions on class sizes.
I mean, changing the line, other things maybe or.
Or could be, and that's why we're looking at this one.
But our biggest, our biggest expense, I mean.
It's not.
Yes.
That would be our grandest.
Yeah, I mean, we, we can talk about saving, and there are times when we talk about their, you know, you can talk about spending, and dollars falling back, or if we're, for my parents, but yeah, class size will be the biggest thing we'll have to focus on, I'm sure.
With, with any school district, and I think that's what people, what other businesses don't understand, is that the majority of our budget goes into salaries. And there's not a lot of it over there.
Isn't broken up between teacher salaries and educator salaries or classifieds?
Yes, we have, that'll let in.
That'll all be broken up.
So with that, why don't we take a break?
One complaint I heard from teachers, from, as I had conversations with them, is they said we, the teachers from year one, year five, those aren't just really job bands, but after year five, step program really does suck with other, other business students, are more tenured teachers, more advanced, more specialized, and probably our better teachers are the ones who are why they pay as much on, in their step program and raise it as, as other businesses. So we're possibly losing teachers that are good teachers to other school businesses because they can see they're paying for certain forms of results because it's, you know, step programs. Are we looking at how we increase pay for our more tenured teachers, even a better step program to where we retain certain teachers versus constantly having rotation in the new teachers and paying them, making a higher salary, giving them a little bit of job, but as they get further into their career, they're looking to go to a school leadership role.
So we train them, we spend all money, train them for three years.
There aren't those.
Oh, I didn't realize this was that far off. Except some things. I, because I know we did the promotion for masters, and we actually pay for their masters. 75% of our teachers now have masters. Why does that help them?
Yeah. But there's some teachers out there who still aren't, that you, okay, put my.
We can do an analysis of that, and I, and we haven't this year. And I know that they have in the past, but we, we will do that. I mean, and even when I sat with Chris, and we're looking at, you know, the first 10 years to move down, it's, you know, maybe 650, then the next 12 years, it's 750, and then you have your 2% cross. I can't tell you that it's any further off than another school. But we do have those conversations, and absolutely, we get, we'll, we'll look at it. Because we, we need to remain.
That is, that's right. That's why I'm obviously do that, and I'm just like, oh, that's.
Like, help me out, folks.
I would say, what, five years ago, we didn't get a schedule?
I, I actually, we've looked at it, I mean, almost every year.
We look at it every year, but five years ago, we redid the schedule, and we were specifically looking at the columns you're talking about, and how much the jumps were.
And one of the things you might be talking about is, is we have frozen bachelor's degree.
We have.
So, we, you go in, I think it's a 10 years, 10 or 15 years. 15, it's, so if I'm here 15 years, and a bachelor's degree, no extra hours. You're 16, I'm making exactly the same, 17. The encouragement there is, is to move people to the right.
Right.
It is their decision. It is their decision.
Well, it's not completely their decision. The, the new certification rules are, if you don't have your masters, you can't do your certification.
Oh, really?
It is forcing people to the right, because they, that's how you get paid.
Is it, have your masters or, is there an option, have your masters or continue your continuing it? Or it's ongoing?
I think it's now to get a, to get your final certificate, you have to have your masters.
So, you can extend, so you, you have your initial, you can, you're then supposed to have your masters, but you can extend it one time to, then you have to have your masters.
Right. And so, that's why we redid 15. And multiple years ago, we did that with a grandfathered scale. So, there were people who were late in their career, they didn't want to get their masters. They already had. They had lifetime certificates, so it wasn't gonna impact their certification. So, they elected to be on a different scale, oh, yeah, they're not, okay. And so, theirs looks completely different than the way everyone else's does.
And, and if you think about it, I think we get compared a lot to a school district to the West. And their, and their salaries, their, their levy is 50 cents more than ours.
And they, they keep that in mind, that schools are now setting their levies because of teacher salaries.
Right.
But we have not. And then, we're digging into, I think, what he was wanting to talk about, like.
Right.
50 cents more.
That's 15, it, they're about, it's not 50 cents.
So, you have to look at the whole picture, of the benefit that the teacher gives. They have this salary schedule, but we pay for the total interest. The, the other districts are, like, you're gonna have to use that as, as, I suppose, other benefit.
I think we do look at it. It's not, we're not on the schedule, but we do look at it yearly, and we talk through it, and we get a salary comparison through MSTA, and the COC does a salary comparison every year. So, we look at those a lot.
But yeah, I mean, that would definitely be the goal for next year, that we pre-book all that after.
I mean, it's important that we look at retaining teachers, training them.
Yes.
That's better for students, I mean, our number one core objective, right? I mean, that's the best thing for the students, to have teachers there for a long time. And then, and you get, well, if those want to have a lot of danger, get the dudes, they come in, fail those spots.
And they're probably gonna help it now, because there's a, a time to do one teachers, you know, and it doesn't matter what it is, teachers.
Just because we're different 30 years, doesn't mean you're the best one.
Yeah, you can, yeah, no, I know, but I'm just, I was just making the point, you know, there's a, there's a fine line between retention and recruiting. And you wanna, you wanna, you wanna, yeah, you wanna make sure you, the deal is you wanna make sure you're keeping your good ones, and letting, letting the other ones go.
Right. Within the, within the retention, within the retention battle that we're working on, like, there's a district south of us, who's gonna start out next year 42,000 for bachelor's zero.
Oh, my, right.
I grew up.
Wait, sorry.
But there's a, there, 42,000, when you compare that to ours, that's a huge difference for. So, when you're talking about recruiting teachers, that's what a new teacher looks at. They know, "I can go here for two more grand."
Yeah.
A year. It does make a difference.
It, I'm not arguing with you at all. It makes a difference, but then they also say, "Well, what kind of district is that? And why do you wanna move my family, start my family there and take roots?"
Yeah, about us, about them, about all those communities. Yeah, yeah, that's all a part of recruiting, I completely agree with you.
Teachers already know, "Okay, I'm not gonna get paid very much." Where's the best place I can, where's the best town with it? You know, where's the best district? Especially my family, because my kids are gonna go to school there too, probably, but.
Yeah, we're a quarter of two weeks, and one supply port in there.
Both of us. And more and more people are living in one area and teaching in another area. Used to, used to, we're just, we have, we got that conversation.
Yeah.
But it's, it don't mind the people, the number of people I know that live here and teach somewhere else, and those that live somewhere else and teach here. You know, I mean, I'd say, if you start looking at, you start looking at statistics, it's higher if someone may be chasing, you know, the pay, or anything, it's just, it's different. It's a different world from the old, used to, you know, old method, I think.
Oh, I stand by that 100%.
100%.
Stand by what?
That they don't break you the bank.
Correct.
You may leave for $10,000 to $15,000, but you're not leaving for $2,000.
Okay, now, if you're a brand-new teacher.
Brand-new teacher, then.
Then it's gonna, it's gonna be a difference.
Same difference, the $2,000 extra difference. Yeah, there, yeah, there are tons in a day.
And it's, I don't think.
No, no.
And plus, that's a good place to work, out there, they have good students, so they're, they're, their programs.
Right.
So, if you guys don't mind, then I think Chris has finished this. Chris is like, "All right, all right, absolutely, absolutely." Oh, come on.
All right. Funny how that works.
My wife says I'm gonna bat.
Right, it is, I get it. We play, and I would drive it back, we go for a minute. We drive.
I said, "I gotta go."
Oh, yeah, that's my plan.
Yeah.
You just got to stop it, lock it, and buy this truck.
Yeah.
Your truck actually used to be a gas, but, so we stopped so often, the gas was going. We're asking for.
Yeah.
Cry it, it was perfect.
Yeah, that works, yeah, I, I often tell my wife, "My, so, John, I mean, just stop." It gets most of the time it hurts, but we just like to go. And if you were to get like a gun, I could go.
Okay.
Really deserve that, I don't, I don't, I drink a lot of water, and I drink a lot of coffee. And I usually work, I have a great conference.
Okay.
I do, I don't mind this, I do this thing, I wait.
You're interested.
It works better than going down there and say, "I really want to have a pass," and this is.
I felt my things enhanced 50 years ago. It's already open to the contracts.
Yeah. Every contract that you write.
Wow, that's pretty amazing. I, I'm glad I did that. Well, I'm glad I did, I agree with that.
She's a trooper, yeah.
And then, she went down, went back to come back, and we got sold by like 330 visitors. And we're working, we planned this out, but someone are gonna find a room for 5,000. Maybe it's man, or so, they, the, 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 the. We were like, "Can I?" That is a lot, I don't know, so, we're, 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 we're on the way to home.
Yeah.
Let's, let's.
Yeah. We were, yeah, I hammered down, I mean, we were pulling that driveway, 350, and I'm like, "Okay."
Yeah.
Yeah, we just, we stopped. Yeah, we stopped many more times for gas, which was great. Running out, it was about 25 hours.
Cracked out, crammed, yeah, we were, we were, we were just wondering.
Right, well, we were, we were. I think we drove it out. The, it was, and I, I got it out, so three hours that I slept. And he slept, and I, I think it was 5 hours. He took the first 12 hours night, and we, so that kind of worn out. So, then I drove majority away, and around 1:00 or 2:00, he's like, "Yeah, you gotta get some sleep." But I didn't wake him, so then I slept for 3 hours, and got.
Yeah. Yeah. I remember the, we took a trip, and we just stayed there.
So, what happened was?
3:30.
That's how much it started.
My wife, yeah. You know, it's all. And we laughed, because we actually got stopped for the gas, you know, so like 6 hours.
Just ask her, so.
I'll just go back. There was nothing there, every lunch, so, it would then, have a long flight, and then. We were stopping, we was here, you know, with, um, Paul's buddy, my brother, so we said hi, and like, we, you know, we were 30 minutes, so, we stopped, we, we ruined it all, so.
We gained, as we driven down, so we were free. And we, we gained. That was, and we were, we were shugging, at least 10 hours. All right, I get it all, so we ended up being 35 minutes. We couldn't fly, I wouldn't do it every day.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Apple, who are our friends.
I almost didn't, I should find you at first, then I'm like.
But you did, so that's gonna be my next.
Also, the same with the Rice Krispie tree, I'm like, "Yeah, that sounds good."
Yes. So, do you should I make, should I bring the coffee back?
How is it, there's, and, I don't know if I can.
But they need to be warmed up, and they're.
I can go do it real quick.
Yeah.
I need to watch.
Well, one, one of them. We're saying, so, we're, yeah.
This one, yeah, I'm gonna just grab one, and I'm gonna make some more.
Do you wanna take this with you, by chance? That's not probably going with you, but I can take it.
Sure.
It's like, you know, that's one.
Oh, good, good, thank you.
Got a little ball, I mean, this is, yeah. I've kept it a long way. No, that's the other, that's across the way. I've been there too. Anyways, it's, it is a little bit close, and it's right on. It is something like that, though, with you, with you, there you go, it's like you, 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 anyway, that's all. That we, because we know, and stay there, stay close. You know, like, yeah, he is like. Went a whole lot of, a little bit, there's some.
This is my 10th time.
That is very, that's.
That's how we ask it.
Of course, this, or in terms of math.